Order is the regular meeting of the city council Monday, August 18th. The item number two, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, July 21, 2025, regular meeting.
Rules of order, did you do the rules of order?
Oh, I did not do the rules of order. This is a great way to end my term, right? Sorry, item number three, rules of order. The Ellsworth City Council meetings are run with Robert's rules of order, except for those items that are added or changed at our organizational meeting in November after every election. Now, number four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, July 21, 2025, regular meeting. Push this for the council.
Move approval. A second.
Discussion, all those in favor? In unanimous. Item number five is presentation of awards. We don't have any awards this evening. Item number six, city manager's report.
Thank you Chair Beal. A few things tonight, just a quick update on the courthouse road project. I noted a more in-depth update at the last council meeting, but we finalized the stormwater design for the road. We have a meeting with the DEP tomorrow to discuss further the likelihood that this will be a submission for a permit by rule. We're under, I think, the 2,000 square foot limit or the 2,000 for not having to have a full permit. So it's a 20-day permit by rule process that we think we'll be under. So we're just going to discuss kind of some of the final design plans with DEP before making that submission. Also likely to go out tomorrow, I know I've talked at some, a couple of the finance committee meetings on a clerk of the works for this project that we'll put out to RFP to sort of independently manage some of the putting out to private bid for the road, as well as of the potential public works interfacing on some of the components that might make the most sense for us to do internally. So that'll head out tomorrow. Also had a great meeting just with the Acadia ATV Riders Club, over 300 members over there. Had a great meeting last Thursday and just to see that their parking lots are just packed with people and visitors and they want to access more Ellsworth city services and it's a growing recreational community. I think one of the interesting things about this road project is the potential access for parking, first public parking access on the rail trail in Ellsworth and could help really kind of maybe upgrade some of our support for that community and what's clearly a growing recreational and economic development activity that goes all the way from here to Callis. So another quick programming note, there's the Maine Outdoor Film Festival here at our Franklin Shee Parklet on August 20th. Films begin at 7:30 PM and the Outdoor Film Festival curates and produces film experience related to beauty, interactivity, and complexity of our planet. So this suggested donation is $5 to $10 to help support the hard Ellsworth programming out there. There was a great event with the Soulbenders a couple of weeks ago that was really, really well attended. I think the cafe lights are out there now and it's just, it's a really cool experience. If you haven't done an evening out in the parklet just yet, please join us on August 27th at 7:30 PM. Another reminder that council papers are now open, so drop by our city clerks' area if you'd like to be put on the ballot. And there's a 50 signature requirement. They have three open seats on the city council. There's one open seat on the library board of trustees and two open seats for the Ellsworth school board. The petition deadline is Friday, September 5th at 12:30 PM.
Sorry, that's changed to the 8th, to us being closed on Friday.
Sorry, that's right, September 8th.
No, it's been changed on our website.
September 8th at 12:30 PM. Also, I just want to give a huge thanks to some staff. One is our own deputy city manager, Sarah, who's been here about six months now. I think the word I best describes her is indefatigable, like there is nothing that slows Sarah down. We were just talking about capital improvement planning on the way here and some of her work with the consultants and just last Friday we had our weekly check-in and just I value her advice and her work on just about every single piece of the organization. It's been going so great. And then also a big, 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 big thank you to our whole highway department. It's been a tough spring with all the city road projects that went on to do the 1.6 million in city done roads, but then also interfacing with the huge High Street and Maine DOT road project, which required incredible amount of interfacing. And oftentimes, things would come up and it was our public works teams who had to go out there to kind of make things right for our, our community. And it was an enormous workload. It also just, you know, it seems crazy now, but there was a time when it was raining every single day for about 33 months. It was not an easy spring in terms of potholes and other pieces. And then they also had to deal with, you know, a new city manager, new parks and rec director, beautification activities that really spruced up Nolton Park, our harbor, our main streets. How they do all these things day to day is, is really beyond me, not just Nate and Brian or our leadership team, but the whole entire crew are just doing incredible, incredible work. And then finally, a big thanks to Peter Farager at the Chamber who's been interim director. He's, you know, I think a lot of times interims are just sort of there to sit in the seat, rightfully so, to kind of pass things by. But Peter, I hear emailing like two, three times a week. He wants to know how the city sees a new business and how that can kind of better relationship from us to say, hey, we're seeing this permit come through or there's new business, send it over to them so they can do a welcome packet. There's a discussion about a potential smell that was out there that he thought was kind of affecting. And you can just tell how much he cares about the Chamber and this community, even in the interim capacity as they're, they're looking for a new director over there. And it's just, there's Peter like, Peter, people like Peter all over Ellsworth. One of my favorite parts about being city manager, I think one of my first meetings was with him and, and it was about a playground over at the Demire Fields. And they're kind of talking about this new playground facility and this and that. And I was kind of waiting for the ask, like, and we'd like the city to pony up blankety-blank. And he was just like, oh, no, it's all paid for. We've done the fundraising and we're good to go. We just want to notify the city. It was like, wow, like, what a great, a great individual. And thank you very much to him for all the work he's doing over at the Chamber right now. And that's it for the manager's report.
Any questions? Item number seven, committee reports. Do any councillors have any reporting on any committees that they participated in over the last month?
Yeah, I can report out on the solid waste committee. John Stein and I, councillor Stein and I met last week. The main focus of our conversation was getting our solid waste program to budget neutral. And so we discussed a number of short-term measures that help get that delta closed. So solid waste is no longer a net negative on the city budget. And then we also discussed some more long-term approaches as well. So the hope is to have this, the kind of the, you know, the, so I don't want to speak for the staff, but they're working on getting materials prepared for September, October. I think the goal is September for the council to consider as far as changes to, in the short term, solid waste and then, and then also kind of previewing what we're thinking for the long term, which dovetails with the capital improvement plans as well. So very productive meeting. The public works staff are working very hard at this and I'm excited to see what comes next month.
Speak for the Arbor Commission. Through our Project Canopy grant, we have, we had secured some funds for a forestry management plan for the Ellsworth city forest. And we have a forester currently working on that right now and we're hoping that in early September, looking kind of at the 10th, but more details on that, to have a public forum to discuss with the community, kind of what they want to see there. And so the forester can build that into his recommendation. And that includes kind of figuring out how to make now two or three city parcels that are not contiguous, contiguous there, how we can connect them, have better access to them and everything. So that's, I'm really looking forward to that. And then also this month, our tree steward will be starting to walk down Foster Street and Washington Street, looking for planting locations in the city right of way for our IRA grant. So anybody out there listening that's on Foster and Washington Street that may want a tree, please reach out to me or Michael. And yeah, we'll be out, we'll be out walking around. And I think that's all.
So nice to have trees planted too that, you know, are meant to be planted by roads.
Yes.
Beautiful trees that die after a few years because they can't stand the salt and everything else.
Yes, very intentional planting.
That's wonderful. Anyone else? Okay, item number eight, citizens' comments. This is the part of our meeting where we invite citizens to come to the podium. Please state your name. And we also ask that you keep the item that you want for discussion not beyond the, not beyond the agenda. For those items, please wait till the agenda item is called. And also to please keep your comments to three minutes. Is anyone that would like to come to the podium? Item number nine, councillor comments. Do councillors have anything that they would like to bring up at the meeting? Councillor Howland?
I heard talk of hiring a consultant for the tune of $35,000 to rezone the Tiff district. It was just a discussion. I believe the city of Ellsworth needs to eliminate the Tiff district and start treating everyone that wants to come to town the same way. There is a method you can do that. And if you eliminate the district, the money goes back into the general fund where everybody can pull from it, not just some. The other thing is the impact fees on the east side of Cards Brook, I'm told. Apparently, if you develop anything on that side of the brook, there's all of these impact fees. They don't work and they need to be eliminated. That's it.
Councillor Stein, did you have your hand up to speak?
Yeah, just, just briefly, I appreciate the opportunity to zoom in here remotely. To me, no, I have a six-month-old. His mom's out of town for a bit, so I'll do my best here. He's sleeping right now. If he wakes up, I'll hold him up so you can all see. The audio is a bit shaky. I've also got the YouTube up, which has great audio, but it's like 15 seconds delayed. So I'll do my best to be engaged and, and pay attention as we move forward. But I may ask you to repeat yourselves. I can't hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Unfinished business. Council order number 02500, my computer keeps going down. 025, 072500, discussion of potential action on authorizing payment of excess funds resulting from the auction of 15, 16 Fifth Street back to the prior owner sponsored by councillor O'Halloran. Would you like to make a statement first, councillor Howland?
I would. The city has many processes for foreclosed property. Before the foreclosure, I guess there's an abatement process and the city has granted abatements to certain people in the past. And there's something called a repick, which I may need some help with, real estate purchase installment contract where people have lost their property to foreclosure but are allowed to stay in it and work out a payment plan to buy the property back after the taxes are paid. So that brings us to this sad situation that we have where the city foreclosed on a piece of property and sold the property. And I believe that the city was right in doing that. I believe there is some questions whether the people got fair notification because it was during the COVID pandemic when the postmaster would sign because there wasn't personal contact going on. So the notes would come back, if I'm correct, signed by the postmaster, not the gentleman that lost the property. The property was foreclosed upon, and I'm using round numbers, but the property taxes and all of the legal fees and auction fees amounted to around $19,000, with the sale proceeds leaving $117,907.99 left over after the city was paid. And I'm a big advocate to return that money to the property owners. That's not our money. And I would like to see the city return that money plus 6% interest because the city charges 6% interest when people don't pay their bills.
My turn?
Your turn.
Sue McLean, tax collector. I understand, I think we all understand the reasoning and why you feel the way you do. And we all would like to be able to, to do that. But our hands are tied legally and there's only so much that we can do. There's very little I can do, but I think that we have to not just look at this one, we're looking at multiple locations, whether it was only $5 excess or $20 or, or $1,000 or $5,000, anything that we sold. We legally can't send it back, but if we could, we'd also be looking at setting a precedence. And how far back do you go with that? I mean, I just, I think you're, I think we would be opening a can of worms if we did this. But it's kind of a moot point for me because, I mean, I've got legal advice saying we can't do it. It's not, it's not legal for us to do it. We didn't have the right ordinance in place at the time. And we never have done that. So I don't know. I don't know what else to say about it, but that's what I came up with.
I'd also note in agreement with Sue in this piece, I, you know, think it's a tough situation, but I think in some ways it's similar to Bray in that, you know, we've given, aired it a lot. We've looked into it a fair amount, but there's also kind of the legal precedent that previous city councillor decisions kind of holds. And, you know, we, this is under our current legal authority, we don't really have the position to kind of give this money back in this way. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, we could vote to give it back. I was told that there wasn't too many cases in Ellsworth where there was equity left over.
Yeah, but we don't know that. That's the problem. We don't know how many there are. And for us to look back, I, there's, you'd be spending probably a lot more than that to have somebody come in and go through all the books and try and figure that out. It just is not.
Well, we know this one. And this poor family's lost their equity and I say it goes back to them.
Yeah, I think the legal guidance that we received, there isn't like a motion, you couldn't even go forward with a motion, it wouldn't hold too, because there's no statutory authority for moving funds back to, refund excess money to a prior owner than the previous council decision that's already moved forward. There's no, currently no legal mechanism for that.
I mean, this is what we've been advised by lawyers. I mean, I don't, I'm not, I'm not standing here saying I don't want to do it. I'm saying, I'm standing here saying we can't do it legally. I'm not going to do something illegal, so.
And I'm sitting here saying this council could do it. You're talking about $117,000 of somebody's hard-earned money that we have kept. And I don't believe, I don't believe that it can't be done. I believe the city won't let it be done.
Not when we've been advised by lawyers not to do it and that we can't do it.
It would set a precedent, but what would be the problem was setting a precedent. If you've kept, if you've kept money that belongs to other people, I don't see that it's a problem that we return that money.
I guess I don't understand. Why are you, this is one person out of all of them. Why aren't you advocating for everyone in the city that this has ever happened to?
This is the only one that's happened since I've been here.
That's the only, that's the only one in the last five years that we've actually sold?
I believe so.
The only one I've seen, unless there's more secrets going on at City Hall.
No, no secrets. I'd bring it right here.
I guess my thing is if we, we can vote and we can do something, but I'm not, I'm not willing to vote for something that we have been advised by our, our council that it's illegal. I'm not going to vote for an illegal action. So that's my opinion.
This would probably require a lot more legal counsel and discussion, but the real estate sales fund, is that expenses from that fund or a earmark for anything specific? Could an option be to use whatever funds remain in that, if they have been spent elsewhere, for something, if not directly back to a family, could be used for housing funds or heating funds or something that could be a give back to the community, including this family?
Yeah, that money goes, anything like that goes into that, that fund that you're talking about. And then, I'm not in finance, so I don't even have the fancy words, but eventually it goes into the general fund. How it gets there, I, I, that's not, I don't know. But at that point, I believe it can be used for those kinds of things.
I think, I think that's a misnomer. The, the, that real estate fund is set for specific items, such as the fuel fund and to go to items like that. It, it's paid out of that fund. Is, it doesn't go into the general fund to be used for anything. It just gets paid out of that fund. That's just a, I think that what they're trying to say is paid out to the people. But it doesn't just go into a.
I think it's a great idea if we could use it for that sort of thing, helping people, fuel funds or whatever.
You know, this is a hard situation and I agree with Steve. I would like to see this money go back to the previous owners. But I also would be quite the hypocrite if I went against legal counsel's opinion to the city. It's a really, it's a no-good situation, but it's not caused by the city doing anything wrong. City followed its procedures and state statute at the time, which has since changed. And the city will follow the new law, you know, moving forward. So I don't like it. I, I think Steve is right in as far as it would be great to give this money back, but I'm not going to go against the advice of legal counsel. And so I won't vote to send this money back. And, you know, but if there's a way we can use this money through that fund to, you know, as councillor Stein suggested, to try to help the community in other ways, I think that would be a good use of the funds.
Do we have a motion?
I move to return the funds to the Karst family in the amount of 117, 117,907.99 plus 6% interest.
Do we have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have a discussion? Any additional motions?
I'd be happy to reach out, look, look into that fund and what it can be spent on or what it has been. And maybe Steve, you and I can have a chat, see if there's any creative ways of using some of that money to, to at least help a little bit in some way.
Isn't that fund already set up to be used for that? Do you remember, Tammy?
Is this just the fuel fund we're talking about?
No, it's the real estate.
Real estate sales.
That just gets dumped into the general fund.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have anything.
Yeah, it just, just gets.
And for the records, if this happened today, the money would have to go back to the family.
Yes.
Correct.
Change in law?
Yeah. Can I just clarify? So it, just because I want to get it through my head. So that does go into the general fund? Like I thought originally, I just want to double.
There wasn't anything that that money was supposed to be appointed for.
We have budget for it and.
I hadn't heard of anything. Yeah.
Okay.
Cover it or make it an assigned purpose for it each year after the money gets dumped in.
Okay, so there is an assigned purpose for it.
You can assign.
It's not automatic. The council had to approve that for an assignment.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11, council order 02, 072509, request of the public works director to accept the quote for salt and sand.
Good evening, my care's public works director. Coming back for approval of purchase of winter road salt. We did put it back out to bid, posted it on the website, MMA, sent it to bidders. We had three bidders return bids. New England salt came in at 6585, Morton salt came in at 8883, and Eastern salt came in at 6640. So the apparent little bidder would be New England salt. However, as in the previous month, we are asking that we take the Eastern salt bid because they provide a better quality product for our employees and the people of Ellsworth to use when we treat the roads in the wintertime.
I don't know, Brian, if you could kind of talk about that just for like what the difference is. I know you and I discussed in the public works meeting a bit about this.
Brian, move highway woman. I have some samples for you. Guys can see.
Nice. Holy crap.
I want to send the lumps is the salt that we usually get from New England salt. It's a much finer salt. So anytime that you're out in the weather, either snow hitting it or rain, that's what it does. It clumps up and turns into chunks. And most of the time when it's sitting in the salt shed, it does that. So when you load it into the truck, you're trying to spread it out and you're going down the road and you get two separate spreaders. So you get one that's a rear spreader and one that's a side spreader. And on the rear spreader, when you get your gate only open this high, that's not going to come through. So you have to stop at every intersection where every time you turn around, you don't open the gate up, pull all the lumps out, close the lid down, what you waste on the ground. And on the side spinner, where it's so fine, it collects on the chain, bed chain that goes across, and it starts backing up on the inside. So it puts pressure on the chain that's feeding it to it. And once it comes out, comes down, hits the spinner, it connects to the rod that's going down. It makes a perfectly shaped cone. So the salt is not hitting your spinner. You're spinning it out in the direction you want it to go in. And it sends it just dropping, just like that. It's not going, spreading out over the lane that you want to go to the center line or the double line on the lane you're going down through. Now, the bigger crystals is coming from Eastern salt. That's what we've been getting, got last year. That worked really well. It spreads out the even pattern, gets across all your lanes, traffic beats again, and melts, melts it a lot quicker and you have to put less product down. Now, with the fine stuff, even on a bare road, you get a little bit of wind on it and it blows it off because there's nothing but dust. It's just ground too fine.
Moisture content have anything to do with that and either product?
Moisture affects them all, but the bigger crystals, it really, it, when the bed chain moves, if it clumps up just a little bit, it breaks away, pack it back to what we're looking at right there. You're only talking $1,650 difference.
Yeah, as I was saying, how many tons are we buying?
3,000.
And that doesn't take into account the waste from, not only time or material.
You're probably spending 15 minutes on each trip. So if you're going to stop, say. So if you're going to stop, say you're going to do Myrick Street, so you're going to come out from Beetsland Road, come down, you're going to go down Myrick Street, you're going to go down, sometimes you're going to stop at the light right there by Home Depot, but other times you can make it down to Carwell's, you're going to get out, you're going to clean your spinner off, you're going to clean the chute out. Sometimes you can make it back to the wayside for it clogs up again, sometimes you can't. Most time you get back over to Jackson Lab, you got to do the same thing. Like I said, every time you try to clean it out, you try to clean it out the quickest you can, but we're getting the lumps in there and getting the stuff that slides down beside it, you, you leave in a pile.
Nate, that's your route, right?
High Street is, yeah.
And I know that because I plowed High Street and I had the same problem with that stuff from Eastern Fine Salt. It's absolutely miserable and frustrating.
Do you have the same issue?
A lot of times, yes. You know, and for me, the sixteen, the sixteen hundred and fifty dollars is different. You're looking at like three or four guys that are taking fifteen, twenty minutes sometimes during the course of the night on a twenty-four hour storm. So at that point, you're paying overtime for them to be sitting there messing with the salt when we could just be doing our route. It, it's just easier on us. After you're there for twenty-four hours, you don't want to be banging with a claw hammer. And you, and you're breaking bed chains because it binds up and like on the front ones you were saying, the front ones, we only have the, the doors open up just a little bit. And those clumps, they'll bind up and if that chain has a lot of force from the hydraulics and it'll push against the doors, we've had doors, metal doors that are bent on those. And it's just the moisture in that and it's, it's fine. It's like talcum powder. And the bigger salt just doesn't stick together like that. So for me, the sixteen fifty versus the overtime, for me, as a taxpayer, works out really well.
I would tend to agree that the city should be buying value, not price. But in this case, I'm going to vote for price, and here's why. Because I don't like how this was handled from the beginning. I think it was handled wrong from the beginning. I hear what you're saying, and I'm all for making the job easier, but I don't like how this was handled from the beginning. Where we went through the state and then somebody called somebody and, and tried to get a price to match it. I don't like how it smells, and I'm voting for the lowest price.
Well, I apologize for that. Steve, that's on me. We'll do a better job on that next time around. You know, now we've put it out to bid twice, and they're still in pretty close range here. We're trying to make sure that we are earlier on those bids the first time around. You know, I can stand up for the integrity of this whole squad here. They've been out in the snowplow with Nate last year, and incredibly detailed and hard-working group of guys at a very tough winter. They're looking for the best quality products. There's no behind-the-scenes deal to get something, I don't know what this implication is, but yes, we could have done a little better on the process here. We've put it out to bid twice, and I'm in support of also moving forward with Eastern Salt.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the winter salt bid from Eastern Salt in the amount of sixty-six dollars and forty cents per ton.
One second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. New business. Public hearing in action on the application for renewal for the following licenses. Jennifer Wing Goodrich, DBA Peppers Pub, Twenty Water Street, for renewal of a City Class B license. Amusement, vichyler and liquor, and renewal of a State Class A restaurant lounge liquor license. Arc Inc., DBA Pat's Pizza, three ninety-six High Street, for renewal of a City Class B license, amusement, vichyler and liquor, and renewal of a State Restaurant Class One, Two, Three, Four, Malts, Spiritus, Venice liquor license. Walmart Stores East, LP number one nine three two, DBA Walmart, number one nine three two, seventeen Myrick Street, for renewal of a City Class C license, vichyler and liquor, and renewal of a State Off-Premise Beer and Wine License. Rooster Brothers Inc., twenty-nine Main Street, for renewal of a City Class C license, vichyler and liquor, and renewal of a State Off-Premise Wine Only License. So open the public hearing on these, on all four of these requests. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak on any of these applications? Public hearing is closed. What was the council's wishes?
Move to approve the renewal of the licenses that were presented.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Council order number zero eight two five hundred, update from the Planning Department on a Main Trails Program Grant Project Proposal.
Good evening. Brittany Merrill, Planning Department. So, in your packet, you saw we have this great opportunity to apply for this grant. There are four cycles of this grant, so if we're able to complete the project within the two-year timeframe, there is a possibility of applying for another one and receiving it. So hopefully we can definitely get this one and keep improving our trail system. I don't know how much more detail you want me to overview or...
Maybe a little bit just for folks, I know some of the counselors and I'm sure all of the citizens have read all the background materials.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Maybe just a little bit more on the program itself and the Branch Lake Expansion.
Sure. So after looking at the criteria of this grant program, we decided, after much research and talking with my fellow colleagues, that improving the Branch Lake Public Forest would be the best route to go with this grant proposal. It'd be pretty much an easy win. It didn't give some attention back to the Branch Lake Public Forest, which if anyone has hiked it in the last few years can attest that maybe the wayfinding needs a little help and, you know, it just needs a little bit more care to make it a better place for Ellsworth citizens. And with this grant project, it focuses on bringing up the main tow road trail to an accessible trail, so that way everyone, no matter what their mobility limitations are, can actually enjoy a piece of nature that we have right here in Ellsworth. They don't have to fight traffic on the island, they don't have to worry about tripping on routes and, you know, not being able to enjoy the peace and quiet that this beautiful piece of land offers. And with this grant program, it's more than just the trail. We can also upgrade the parking lot. The easement, the conservation easement on the land restricts us to twelve parking spaces, so that's kind of the limitation we're playing with, but there is plenty of room to expand it a little, add a privy in there as well, just to make it a better experience and, you know, keep it a nice place that people will want to go to on a frequent basis. Does anyone have any questions?
Council Helen?
To clarify, there is no cost to the city?
No. Unless people want to volunteer their time, you can count that as cost.
So there'll be no cost as everything will be in-kind match? What's this match?
So the match can be a few different things, but mostly labor. It can be price of equipment used. There's more detail in the actual grant guidelines for that, but we do have some volunteers who have already expressed interest in helping out. So if we go for the full two-hundred-and-fifty K grant, the ten percent match would be about twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's about eight-hundred-and-sixty-ish hours of labor using the federal labor rates for unskilled workers. So that's...
So it's a ten percent?
It's ten percent of the grant amount awarded.
In-kind match, which could be volunteer hours. I know the Moose and Elks have thought about, especially with Roddy and Parks and Rec coming in and having a special kind of connection with our trail building there. I know it's not just this piece, but a lot of our Branch Lake Forest trails need to be upgraded. And so we talked about culture and vision for city. I think one of the pieces that I talked to Michelle was just the kind of city that maintains its public spaces better. We just did this Branch Lake Public Trails access, and I know talking to Robert Grant on, he said his mom would use it. And is this the type of, and really maybe making a special emphasis on ABA and ADA access in our trails. We might not have all the height that Acadia has, we have some really beautiful, special places out here, and making them as easy to get to for our citizens and our visitors alike, I think is a, a real big push we're going to make as a city over the next few years.
I'm excited for this because if we do it successfully, we can get another grant on the next parcel of land that we're closed on, right? Have we closed?
Yes, we are officially closed on that Haines property.
So, and I will plan on volunteering. I'll put that out there.
Awesome. We're happy to.
So in-kind of you.
I know.
I'm hoping too, there's some interest in like outdoor educational programs. They would be perfect opportunity to use a space after it's finished. So we have a lot, it's just the start. We have all that land, we can springboard from this program, or from this grant program, this project, and just keep, you know, enhancing it respectfully to the environment and our drinking water, and maybe even rival the Bangor Public Forest someday. So, it's very exciting.
I'd just like to say, I think this is a great opportunity, and I think knowing the community that we have here in Ellsworth, we'd have no problem getting upwards of twenty-five thousand dollars worth of in-kind volunteer hours. I'd be happy to, I'm very good at swamping brush.
Perfect. We'll need to.
Doesn't take, you know, just pick stuff up and move it, so that's my speed. So I'd be happy to do it. And, but those trails, and it's a really special, again, it's also our public drinking water, it's part of protecting that resource as well. And then, yeah, using the money to provide for greater accessibility with the ADA, you know, guide, guidelines adherence, I think is good because it makes it more inclusive for all our members in the community, so.
It also aligns with our comp plan and then also the state's SCORP plan, which is their statewide recreational comp plan, basically.
Thank you. There's no council requirement, so, actual requirement, so. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, council order number zero eight two five zero one, update from the Code Enforcement Office on citywide odors.
I'm Robert Grant, the Code Enforcement Officer. February or March, I can't remember now which, which meeting it was, but we passed the commercial and industrial uses odor ordinance, it was March seventeenth, right in my notes. We passed that odor ordinance, and at that meeting, Councilor Stein asked if I would at some point this summer come back and give you an update on how odor has been citywide. I can say that in general, odor has been down, complaints have been down dramatically from last year, even with an uptick at the beginning of August. To date, I'm at thirty-two, I think I have thirty, I have thirty complaints logged in the odor log that I, I submitted with my memo. I've received one more since then about our, our biggest offender, and then one that was not, that came in last week. But so, other than, other than Maine Organics, we've had one smell complaint all summer. Other than that, I've had thirty-one, which is about a third of what I had last year. So, I just would also like to report that in, what was it, June twenty-seventh, or yeah, June twenty-seventh of this year, the smell was bad enough onsite that I did give them a notice of violation, which had a thirty-day order to comply to reduce, reduce the odor. About thirty days later, on the fifth of August, they had, or yes, on the fifth of August, they had another even worse smell issue. So that, that, that ended up with a second notice of violation that was sent to the owners of Maine Organics. That thirty-day window is not up yet. Since then, as the, as the odor log shows, in, in the days following, it stopped. Like I said, I only have one complaint that's not on your log. So they seem to have gotten that odor, for the most part, under control. We'll see if it continues or in what direction it goes in. But that's basically all I have.
How many violations can they get before we stop them?
They, under, under the new odor, odor ordinance, they would get one more violation, and if they fail to correct it after that violation, we could choose to take them to court over it.
What if they do in thirty days? You just keep...
So, so for instance, if they, so after the current, so let's just use the, the current second notice of violation that they have. So if they were to go a year without another really smelly outbreak, I would probably consider that a fresh set of violations because they seem to have fixed the problem that they had before. If they continue to have issues, you know, into September, then I probably would consider that their third notice. I mean, it, it depends. It's, there's some subjectivity there and it, it ultimately is my decision, but it basically comes down to, are they actually trying to fix the problem? Have they been successful in doing what, what we've asked them to do? So that would be, it would depend basically on, on the timeframe of these, these violations. If they, if they seem to fix it, you know, by, by beginning of September, then that would be one thing. But if, you know, if we go a year or so or whatever, without any more violations, then that would probably be a fresh set.
My only fear is, is that we're going to keep having these thirty days. And there's, there's, this, it is, it's getting to be too much. I mean, because I, I don't think it was the intent of the council with this new ordinance that, that we were just going to keep every thirty days letting them fix it. I think it's getting to the point, and I'm, I mean, and I hate to, to put someone out of business, or someone that's a taxpayer out of business in Ellsworth, but it's, it's starting to be...
Oh, I, I don't, I don't disagree that, especially that one in August was...
Yeah. And, and it's just, it's just constant. And now, it's, if they're not, they're, they're just band-aiding and they're not fixing the issue.
Yeah, I had, I had the DEP in my office after the, the early August incident, and if I'm going to be honest, I'm not, I'm not sure the DEP really knows how to fix the problem. I, I pointed things out to the, the guys from the DEP, that by the time they started the conversation, the, the problem was one issue, and then by the end of the conversation, it was another, like they didn't really have an answer for me. I was a little frustrated with that.
Council Helen?
Measuring the amount of complaints doesn't mean it doesn't smell. The citizenry is tired of it, and they realize nothing happens when they report to City Hall. Just because you get less complaints doesn't mean that there's not offenses going on. And it's been going on for seven years, and we rewrote the books twice. It's unacceptable. I believe you drive by it twice a day?
At least.
Come on.
No, I, I don't disagree with you, Steve. I, it's...
Yeah, and I should also note that the standardness that was rewritten to the new ordinance, you know, is designed for this purpose. To your point, Chair of you, I don't think there was the intent of the council to, nor is it written in there to allow resets even upon next year. It was really written to, if it continues to repeat and repeat, and the owner that's producing the smell, whether it's Maine Organics or whether it's any other business in the city of Ellsworth, is producing a noxious smell that's affecting neighbors, citizens, people playing at playgrounds repeatedly and can't show evidence that they're actually rectifying the problem, that we'll pursue further legal action to make sure the problem is rectified permanently. And I know Robert's on it, and I do disagree that, you know, that this new piece is for people should report it, that Robert is taking, as, as his notes show very clearly, he is taking it seriously, and every single report goes into that potential, bringing Robert out there as an, an additional notice of violation. And anybody, you know, I had a separate smell issue that came up today, this isn't just towards Maine Organics that I sent over to Robert for investigation as well, and if that one were to continue over and over and over again, the new ordinance is designed... that one were to continue over and over and over again, the new ordinance is designed to be able to escalate and bring these folks to legal action quicker in the way that the prior consent agreement really limited the city, at least in that specific instance, but this on a broader level. So, while I hope this is the last time that we hear about it, and we have to give, you know, this business or organization, the, this process, that, you know, that Robert doesn't come back here, and that this log ends today. If it doesn't, whether it's this month, two months from now, six months from now, or eight months from now, if, you know, we're getting these repeated violations, that's what the ordinance is for, and we may need to bring in legal counsel on kind of, probably for the next time that we do an update on this, for what legal action looks like in detail.
Yeah, the, the dates that worked out, so, in, at the end of June, the first notice went out, about five weeks later, the second notice went out. So I don't have a strict thirty-day, like, that's, that's what they're given to comply, but clearly they didn't fix the issue if forty days later, it's, they're having another huge odor outbreak. They just happened to have not had one that was that bad in, you know, in that thirty-day period. So it's, it's not like I, you know, thirty days, you don't smell, and on the thirtieth day, you're on, the clock's reset. That's not, that's not at all how I, how I, I interpreted the ordinance either.
And I should note that, you know, let's say, Robert is the professional in this, he's been trained in this as well, you know, let's say they were to put in a very big building to enclose it and to recirculate it, and it's shown a pretty substantial effort and investment to mitigate that, I think that a year from now could be considered, you know, but that's up to Robert's professional judgment, that they really went above and beyond to do it, as opposed to, you know, a little cleanup of the pile here to just make it stop smelling for a couple of days. Like, that's not going to reset next year if that happens again, but if they put a building around the whole apparatus in a very expensive sort of, kind of like what's at our wastewater plant, you know, something like that maybe could be considered a year from now, but, you know, it's not looking likely right now.
And, and to Steve's point about people giving up and not complaining because they don't think anything's happening, I did run into a little bit of that. So, after we passed that odor ordinance, I started going around every few weeks as I was out on inspections, and I would stop at the businesses on the industrial road, and anybody that was there, I would stop and ask, "How has the smell been lately?" And overwhelmingly, it was, it's been a lot better this year. Other than these, other than, as the log shows, there were a couple of pretty bad events. Overall, the people that are closest to, to the issue have said it was better. I don't know that they would agree now after the beginning of August, but before that, they had said it was going in the right direction, so. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. You too. Council order number zero eight two five zero two, update from the city manager on the Moore Center lease agreement. Charlie?
Thank you, Chair Beal. You know, I, I'll give a little background for those in the council that weren't able to attend the workshop earlier, the new standing first Monday of the month, the council workshop, we had the YMCA, some of their board members, as well as some members from Friends in Action and the Music Institute, to kind of talk about the status of the lease negotiations with the Y, and, and really talked with council and come to the conclusion that we're going to look towards the city taking over maintenance and operations of the building. From the Y, they've had a, we're very grateful for the now eleven-year run that they've done to the place, but I think as Councilor Howlerin put it, you know, kind of core of the issue is they're, you know, now, now operating at $146,000 loss in a way that really is unsustainable for them without raising rents on other organizations, or something elsewise. So the city is now, and Roddy's our public, our Parks and Recreation Director is going to be taking the lead on kind of figuring out exactly what that means. There may be a bit of a sunset period where the YMCA continues to provide cleaning and operations maintenance while the city figures out the financial mechanisms and operating costs to take care of that building with internal resources, maybe a collaboration with the school on how that building is run and maintained, and then looking towards going to a triple net lease arrangement with all of the service providers in the building, the Music Institute, Friends in Action, as well as the YMCA, based on their square footage for their use and the type of use that each organization has for that. So that's sort of the, the current area we're at in, in those pieces, and, but I know, I know, I'll leave it over to Matt, too. He provided kind of a background presentation on, on some additional information that the council had their packets, that we also discussed at the, at the workshop meeting. But also, he and his board, I think, are interested as well in an interim lease that, you know, puts a little teeth towards the, how fast we move. I think in many ways, the sort of status quo right now benefits the city, because the Y continues to carry some of the cost overrun, so, you know, for the Y and their board, and I'm speaking out of turn here, Matt, but they'd like to potentially not just have a promise to have the, the lease transfer over a period of time to this city ownership, but a little bit more explicit kind of cost sharing arrangements potentially, but, so I'll send it over to Matt for some of his ideas on this front.
Thank you. Matt Montgomery, the CEO of the Down East Family Y. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity, again, to kind of present a little bit. We've been at this now for a little over a year, and, yeah, essentially, we're, we need to move, we, we're not in a position right now where we feel like we can just extend the lease. The lease has been extended for a full year, and, you know, I appreciate the work that Charlie has done, and now being able to work with Roddy. I think that we can come to some sort of, some sort of extension that provides us a little bit of relief of some of the expenses that, that we incur managing the center right now. Big point is that we are willing, again, to come to the table. We're willing to continue operating if that's in the best interest of the city right now, until the city kind of figures out how they want to proceed. So again, whether this is a lease extension that goes through the end of this year, or goes through the end of your fiscal budget, we're, we're open. We just need to really kind of figure out what that's going to look like pretty soon, because again, the lease is, is up now. So happy to answer any questions. I know it's all very vague, but I know Roddy and I have been exchanging emails a little bit about what some of those costs are, and just haven't had a chance to really sit down with them and, and talk about what that lease extension might look like yet.
Is the idea that the city will make a proposal for the Y and the other organizations to consider as far as the lease drafting goes?
Correct. Yeah, we got a, a draft of a triple net lease from another city property that we've had from actually Hamer today, so we figure out, based on our square, square footage, you know, what that would be for the Y, what it would be for Friends in Action, what it would be for the Music Institute, and then bring all of them to basically, as service providers paying to the city, with the intent of Roddy also looking through, you know, the Y has a pretty good extensive list of what electricity costs are, what maintenance costs are, toilet paper, light bulb replacements, you know, any capital asset over $5,000 has already been on the city, so we should replace the roof, but, you know, a lot of smaller capital costs, less than $5,000, we'd have to, you know, budget away for as a facilities piece, too, and, and charge a fair rent rate to recoup as many of those costs as possible, with the intent of, you know, making it sustainable for the YMCA, but also looking at leases and rents in the area as well, to, you know, maybe be able to provide a good price, the business attraction plan, a lot of, you know, our priorities are to keep childcare here in Ellsworth. This is our largest childcare provider on multiple fronts, so I know it's important not just to keep them, but to help them expand, and our, our school is expanding there, starting early this fall, with an addition of a pre-K classroom in the YMCA. There's also, Amy and I, we're meeting tomorrow, we've discussed adult education coming from the Avery Lane Building into this facility, there might be able to be, you know, some additional aspects of that, but maybe we also, you know, we consider, like, what do we have to charge our own, our own renters in that building? When you add people, you know, it's going to create more costs, so, or maybe in the near term, too. Matt, we could consider that, as well as like an interim lease agreement, and what we pay you in order to host the, the school as we're figuring out this interim lease, but I guess it's more of a notification that we may need to call for a, a special council meeting on this interim lease arrangement in a few weeks now, when we have a little more pen to paper on what that will be. But with the workshop, we didn't have, it's the summertime, we didn't have a huge council, I think it was Nancy, Michelle, Steve, and myself, and we had a pretty good discussion on, on kind of this pivot to the triple net lease, you know, at rates that, you know, the city can kind of bear more of the operational costs and not lose too much money in the building, but that are still fair to the Music Institute and Friends in Action and the YMCA to keep these great service providers, and it's a great community center, it's amazing stuff that's happening there every day.
This would be a good time to remind everybody that the debt service that the city pays every month is $27,000 on the renovation of that building. It's a big number, big number.
I thought it was a little more than that, actually, but the...
I'm using round numbers.
Yeah, I think it was one, there's sort of two TIFs that fund the, the debt service on this, and, you know, I think it ends up, but that's something Roddy and I talked about is, including that in our financial accounting, you know, similar to what we do with any of our facilities, we're going to build a new budget document that shows every little piece of that. Including that debt service piece, again, I wouldn't necessarily, you know, that's not the Y's issue beyond their ten-year of agreement, that was what the city had decided to do with that, but yeah, it's a big, it is a big, big debt service to cover, and we'll keep that in there as well. And I think that was on a thirty-year, we'll have, we'll have the deadlines. Another, well, we'll update the debt service schedule, we also have the bond going to seven-year from the twenty, as previously discussed, to be more in life, or in line with the lifespan of the things that were bonded for, but that will also be about $300,000 or so additional debt service starting next year as well. Now, the following year, we fall off by about $150,000, that's why I like to keep in mind not just the usable life of capital projects, but also how our debt service schedules are going when we're considering bonding and other pieces, so that could affect next year's budget in terms of additional capital bonding, but Sarah's working on that capital improvement plan, so in addition to updating the YMCA's lease on, you know, and that'll update for the, the other bonding projects, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Item sixteen, council order numbers zero eight two five zero three, update from the city manager on the track replacement.
Yeah, again, this was one we talked about at the workshop, but I felt it's a big community need, just for folks to know that didn't, watch our workshop, and for the councils that weren't there, that we are proceeding as discussed in the budget discussions on our kind of priority for the next ban bonding cycle would be the track, in addition to the tanker four for the fire trucks, and, and also potentially the cupola, which is leaking pretty substantially, and MMA just issued kind of a finding to look for an update on that piece. So, Amy and I have discussed, we're, you know, still around the one million level. It's likely the next meeting will probably look towards a bond anticipation note, so that we can start putting pieces of this out to bid, specifically the design, so we can get a little more dialed in, exactly what the price of that track would be, and then hoping to have kind of the, the final costs sharing on this be about a third from the city, debt service a third from the school debt service, and then a third, Amy and I will valiantly attempt to fundraise with all of our community partners, it's such a huge community asset for the region as well. And, you know, I also, thinking about our TIF realignments, I think, you know, with the unallocated TIF, we had a lot of debt service fall off on Beechland Road, also the valuations of the TIFs have increased pretty significantly over the last few years. I think the track, you know, either under, I know Tammy, you and I have had some discussion on, on if it might even qualify now as, for this, or if we'd have to wait to kind of edit the TIFs in order to potentially fund a debt service on the track. Courthouse Road might be another eligible piece, you know, similar to kind of the Beechland Road on an asset that we're creating infrastructure for the city, you know, especially looking at the debt service needing to come for the roads that we paid for this year, and some of our larger capital assets, you know, from a fiscal responsibility level, looking at unallocated TIF that was being spent on road debt service in the past, it might make sense for the remaining life of that TIF to think about reallocating it towards this track, towards Courthouse Road projects, and, though, on a variety of other things. But Sarah, I could hear, our, our door that was created at some point is a little thin, but I heard her say, this TIF's also going to cover like a debt service on this capital, kind of an analysis, so that, that's the consultant that's been brought in to look at all of our capital assets, so hopefully they can give us a little bit of guidance here, too, on that piece, but you feather that in with the TIF consultant to kind of look at those. But there'd be some other competitions for that TIF, potential new TIFs. I know Councilor Howlerin is not a fan of this, I know Chair Beal, you won't probably be here during this time, but you're not a huge fan of the credit enhancement agreements. But, you know, Belfast just did two big ones for housing, you know, multiple hundred units, they re-edited their TIFs pretty quickly, it seemed like, and they're, you know, I think the math is probably like three, 400 units of housing that they've, you know, redesigned their TIFs to help fund over a long period of time. And, you know, that might, not just for the current economic development omnibus TIF, and could that go to projects like this track moving forward, so we don't have to increase the mill rate or get new tax revenue for that type of debt service, but those types of things will need to be under consideration. But I've gone far afield from the track now. It's really to say that we're on it, it's number, priority number one, we're really trying to set it up.
Oh!
He's awake!
Oh my gosh.
He's adorable.
What a cutie! Oh my goodness! Hello!
She's like the original internet baby, you know that one that dances around?
This is his second council meeting, if I remember correctly.
Oh my gosh, what a cutie pie.
He's sometimes how muffled out of his clothes, but he's having a good time.
Oh, he's so cute. Thank you for sharing him. Oh my gosh.
No worries. We're trying to get the track ready for that little one.
Yeah, he's going to be a track star.
And I think, in the ideal timeframe, we're coming back to the council for potential ban authorization next month, and then putting it out to bid for an initial designer to get better cost estimates and an actual design for the track plan. I think there's some soccer elements that the field might have to be considered at this time as well. And then, we're putting it out to bid in the, you know, January, February timeframe, and then they're building as soon as graduation ends next summer, so the track's up and running again.
No pun intended?
No, no, none, none at all, never. And there's a bunch of pictures in here, too, I'm sure you're, if you just, it is very much innate, that it's not a usable track anymore.
Well, it's great we have a timeline and deadline, so nothing gets us moving faster than having those, so, yeah, I'm happy to talk about, get our heads together about fundraising and all that.
Great.
Who's going to be spearheading the fundraising? The school, the city?
You know, I think Amy and I will talk a bit about that tomorrow. You know, it'll be a joint project, of course, I've had a fair amount of experience in this in the past, I usually like to work with fundraising consultants because they can drive the bus, but I'm also thinking about maybe talking to Main Community Foundation, I mean, it's really just a list of people, and then moving out to do that, but at the same time, I want to establish a process so that we can track these things and then start to do more of that. I feel like it's actually a very untapped resource for the city to do fundraising for this type of activity. There's all kinds of amazing projects in the city that, you know, I think people would like to invest in if they're given the opportunity, so.
I think the Rotary Club did a really good job of showcasing that up at Demire Field, so.
Yeah.
Been several projects, the corner pier, Nolton Park was a fundraising effort, a large, a large fundraising effort, Jump Playgrounds, we have a history of it, so it...
Do you have any documents or any lists of those things from the past? Or have they...
I don't know where my records are. The Jump Playground, we had a whole list.
Yeah.
We had in-kind and monetary contributions.
Wilson Field was another.
Wilson Field was another one, which I do need to talk to you about.
They'd be in like River, or, I could talk offline.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk offline, but yeah, we, I mean, we have a history of doing that with all, all of our projects, so.
All of the information from the jump fundraiser thing is in my office, and if you're going to buy it.
Really? Great.
I got bored, I'll start it up. I got bored, I started them.
I can't believe you're bored, not with your list.
I want more information on the Nolton Park.
All right. Any other questions for the manager? Okay, council order number 082504, public hearing in action on amendments to the Elsworth City Charter.
Yep, I think this will be over to Sarah in the library.
All right, so this is, I came last month to request us to talk about increasing the number of library trustees from five to seven, so here we are. Any questions, I know a few of you weren't here last month.
Is there a downside to having seven?
Not that I know of, we are the smallest library board in the county.
And the largest library in the county?
I know, it doesn't make sense, well, I think Jessup's about to get a little bigger, and Blue Hill might be a little bit bigger in square footage, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what their square footage is, but, yeah, we have significantly less than, I was very surprised when I arrived here, and it's something we've been discussing for the last two and a half years that I've been here, and we've just finally, finally gotten around to it now that we need more help to fundraise.
I think it's great.
It's very straightforward, and-
Because this is a charter amendment, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing, the public hearing is open.
Raymond Williams, Hancock Street, I served for about nine or 10 years on the library board, and I have no objections to them increasing, wanting to increase the size of the board, however, and this is nothing of their doing, this has come from how I think it has been handled on the, getting it ready, I do not think that this is in order to be heard tonight because basically amending the city charter is, has to follow the statutes of Title 30A and in particular Section 2104, I don't think the public hearing tonight has been properly noticed. In this, you have, it either charter commission or the municipal officers can determine to make amendments to the charter. 2104, Section 1 provides that municipal officers may determine that amendments to the municipal charter should be considered and by order provide for notice and hearing on them in the same manner as provided in subsection 5, paragraph A of Section 2104. Paragraph A of, of, provides, the municipal officers by order shall provide for a public hearing on the proposed amendment. At least seven days before the hearing, they shall publish a notice of the hearing in a newspaper having general circulation in municipality. The notice must contain the text of the proposed amendment and a brief explanation. Now, the notice for public hearing, there were two appeared in the Ellsworth American of, excuse me, August 7th, and I think the one pursuant pertaining to this article basically said the offices will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 18th at 6:00 PM in the city hall council chambers, and then do hear comment and act on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Municipal Charter. And then it says copies of the amendments are available upon request at Elders City Hall, One City Hall Plaza. This notice does not, does not even say what the amendment is for, that it is to increase the number of library trustees, and I think that, something along that should have been anyway, but actually the statute requires that the actual text of the amendment be in this notice, and, and I think going to the next issue on the agenda, the notice has the same problem, but, but if you decide that this isn't sufficient and isn't giving proper notice, if you decide not to do it, I don't think you get to the second one of putting it on the ballot. I went in on Monday around early afternoon to see and inquire in the clerk's office if the copies of the amendments were available at that time, that was on the 11th, and I was basically told that they would be available as part of the packet when it came out, when it, well, when it came out, and I, I think they said Saturday, oh, not Saturday, Friday, although I think now packets are coming out on Thursday, so I was not able to get a copy of the amendment then, and I wasn't sure, I was, I was thinking that the amendments referred to in these two notices were probably the library trustee amendments, but I just wasn't sure because I just, I, I follow enough meetings and listen to enough things going on, workshops and stuff, that I have in the back of my head that there has been, there may be some talk and people interested in maybe doing some other amendments to the city charter, and so I just didn't want something else to be coming up. Where am I here, let's see, amendments on a charter, okay, then, then I kept looking online, and I finally, on figuring that possibly the packet would be coming out on Thursday, Thursday I was, the morning I was away, early afternoon Thursday, I went and I got on my computer and looked, and there was, the packet wasn't there then, and I was on computer till about 2:00, 2:30, and when I went off, it wasn't on, but I did look on Friday, and the packet was, was there, which means it probably got on sometime before the office closed on Thursday, and then that's when I looked and I saw the two memorandums for each of these agendas items from, to the city council, from the library trustees, and it includes the language that was drafted by City Attorney Hamer, and, and then when the American came out again, it had the, two agenda items, and neither of the agenda items has any statement in it as to what the amendments are about, and I think that is a real notice problem also. So my basic point is, I don't think that this material, these two items are in compliance with the applicable statute of, the main revised statute regarding municipality making amendments to the charter when initiated by the municipal offices. Also, there is just one other problem which I see with this, which I think, I'm not even sure that the library may have did much thinking about it, but the very last sentence that Mr. Hamer drafted says, notwithstanding the above, the two new positions created by expansion of the board from five to seven trustees shall be elected for three-year terms beginning immediately following the date of election. And this gets me to something that, depending when this is approved and when you have the first election, electing two more trustees in a year and then adding them on to the group elected that year, you're running the position, you're running into the problem that you could have four trustees' terms all ending in one year, and I don't think that is something you really need to have.
We haven't amended that.
Would, would you want to have the other group, I mean, there's, or we have Tina, if you want to, if you wouldn't mind letting Tina respond to some of these things?
Sure, I-
Yeah, okay, no, that's fine, if they have an amendment to that, then this language, and I, I don't know, I think, I think you have, I don't know, I just think you have a serious notice problem and you really can't act on it tonight.
Yeah, I'd also look at-
And I think there has to be an amendment to that last sentence, too, so that it goes, as far as I'm concerned, you should have probably a 223.
Yes.
With the way the city council is. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so hold on.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to speak on this in public? Okay. The hearing is closed. Sarah, did you want to speak more, or?
Tina might be able to better answer the part about the public notice, but yes, we did submit, you all should have the amendment to that, it did come to our attention after we had already written that first memo, John came back to us and said, hey, you, you should probably stagger the trustees coming on so that you don't have four in one year. So this was a little rushed because we were trying to get this on the ballot, we did consult legal many times regarding this, it was, I was doing the math on how many people were going to come up for reelection every three years, so I asked Mr. Hamer if there was a way to fix this issue, and that's when he said to stagger it, so we solved that problem, but I believe Mr.-
Williams.
Williams might be correct in regards to the information that was posted in the paper, I will have to look into that further, but the amendment was not put in the advertisement.
And, and looking at this memo that we have, it, it says there what should be in the public hearing, because it says be it ordered that the city council shall hold a public hearing on Monday, August 18th, 2025, to consider the following, so that should have all been, what, what he wrote there should have been the public hearing notice.
Right, and I think this was up for question in the beginning, where this was rushed, I think at that point, we wanted to get it on the agenda fast, and it wasn't completed officially yet, so that's where it came into place, where we had to kind of rush this to get this on the ballot in November, however, if we do table it today, it will not go on the ballot because we are out of time, so, so we would have to do it again, bring this up next year.
June, get it to the June?
No, has to be in, has to be in November.
Has to be a, a November meeting?
Mark, it didn't have to be an election that has a certain amount of votes that exceed a threshold of like the prior-
Correct, we had to do the math, so you had to have 30% of votes from your last gubernatorial, that was always rough for me, election, so when I did the math, it was, ended up being, I think it was like over 1,300 votes, so.
Tina and I checked out the last one, this one was going to barely qualify-
Yeah.
-for that, so that, that next June one wouldn't, so this probably wouldn't be able to come up, but if the charter amendment says you need the full text of the ballot in there, and that didn't get in there, then that kind of solves it for me.
Yeah, I agree.
And we were, we were really on the fence if we wanted to push it for this November.
We were, we were both discussing whether it should go on this ballot or not, because it was really rushing it.
We would be scraping by with it being a presidential election last year that we'd be competing with for that number of votes.
Does that make sense, sorry, a little hard to explain, but.
Do you have the statute in front of you?
I don't, but I can.
Where does it say that it has to go to council before it goes to referendum?
Um, is that on our charter? There's so many parts to this that-
Do you have it, Ray?
Thank you.
So that?
That's right. That's just 2104.
Yeah, state statute. I do have all the emails from John Hamer, so I could send it to you guys.
I guess my question or thinking is if we could vote on advancing it tonight and then have a follow-up public hearing that follows this proper procedure to ratify our vote tonight, and I'm just trying to be, think creatively, because, you know, ideally we don't have to wait another year for this, because we know that we have a lot of work that the library is trying to do with its fundraising. So again, I mean-
Think you'd have to have a special meeting.
Maybe, and, but I think, again, the, you know, the standard I'm thinking of in the law is harmless error, and it is statutorily set out, but at the same time, if we're able to provide notice in a way that satisfies the intent of the, of the statute, then maybe we'll be able to address it retroactively, but I'm just kind of thinking out loud and trying to see if there's a way we can do this.
So I guess, so the, the first one, where, where we would have, if everything had gone right, we would have approved the amendments, the council was, and then, but us approving it doesn't do anything, then after we approve it, it has to go and be pretty much ratified by the public.
Yep. Which is not until November.
Right.
And again, the whole, this is all about notice, this is about the public knowing, hey, this is what the city's planning to do, or proposing for you to vote on.
Can we, I guess, is it proper to advance something to election that we haven't approved yet, and haven't provided a public notice on, it should be by statute?
So we have a workshop on September 2nd, would that meet all of the qualifications? Because if we're going to be here anyways, just start the meeting at 6, have these two items on the agenda, as long as we can meet.
I think it's, Tina, enough time to have it printed, and-
Okay, so let's look at the-
Sixty days, or?
Yeah, she could have it printed anyway, but- Can we get, between now and September 2nd, can we get two, is it two public hearings or just one public hearing that we need?
Well, Mr. Hamer, I thought it could have been one, but he said we would need two.
We could put it in the Vanguard Daily News twice.
Or once, and then the other one be?
Okay, so I'm sorry, what date were you guys looking?
September 2nd.
2nd. And what day is the election for the?
It's the first Tuesday after the first Monday, so.
Number four, so I think, well, you narrow it down to 30 different.
I know.
It really would be cutting it close, because you have to, we have to have the ballots prepared in sense to, for printing, um, yeah, the-
When do you have to have them print, when do you, when are you planning on sending them?
The 8th.
Oh, that, September 2nd gives you a week.
Right, but we have to advertise that, how many days did it say in that notice?
Ten, seven, within seven days-
Did it say 10 days?
Within 10 days after petition, municipal officers shall provide public hearing, this at least seven days before the hearing, they shall publish notice, so we've got time.
Yep, we could, we have a special meeting.
And I don't, I think you're getting from the council that we're all in support of this, so we can anticipate a yes vote.
We just have to make sure that's a special meeting, we can't do it during a workshop, but we can do it as a special meeting.
Right.
Just advertise it as a special meeting.
So what day would you guys like to do the special meeting, you said?
Tuesday, September 2nd.
September 2nd, we'll make that advertised separately from the workshop, maybe at 5:45 instead of 6.
Thanks, Ray.
Does that work for everybody, 5:45, so we're here, keeping that to?
Or I could reschedule the workshop to start at 6:30.
Or we can just table it until next year.
No, we're going to get done for you.
Well, you know what, this is yours.
It's a lot of extra work for city staff to make another meeting.
It's okay, I mean, we can get it on there, but-
I mean, special meetings are what we do, right?
We haven't done one in too long, you guys had it pretty good around, but also with the YMCA, we might have to bring this up anyways, so.
I think, Sarah, it's really up to the, it's your thing, it's, it's your request, so it's really up to you, we can do it if you'd like, if it's important to the library, or we can wait a year, it was, it's really, I think it, you know, if it's important-
No pressure, Sarah.
It's not a big deal, Sarah.
It can be done, I mean, especially-
I'm just going to give you hours of extra work, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to take Tina to lunch like every day for a month.
If I can make another comment, going back to something they said about-
Yep, go ahead.
And, and the manager also said about the number of votes you need in the June- And, and, and the manager also said about the number of votes you need in the June election this year, this June election this year.
It wasn't.
It's going to be, it's going to be a primary when hotly contested on both parties. So you should be able to get.
Yeah, that's true.
Enough people voting, I would think, if you want to do that.
It won't just be the school on this one. It actually could be.
We discussed that also.
This election.
So we did discuss that.
Oh, okay.
We, we were on the fence for that, too. So we were discussing that where we had a contested ballot possibly might bring in. I don't, right off the end, I don't remember the numbers flying around my head.
Sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify, the only issue is how we noticed it. We just have to renotice it. We have everything drafted now properly.
Let's just do it.
Let's just, yeah, I mean, you're going to have to do the same thing.
We're going to have to do it all over again anyway.
The work will have to be done at one point or the other. It's ready, it gets this on the right track.
I'm sorry, it's up to you guys, but I'm just saying.
No, you've got, I, I agree. You've got everything that you need. It's, it's.
And it's going to help you with all of this work you're trying to do to expand the library there. That's huge.
The goal. Yep. There were a lot of things to factor in, so we were really trying to get it in there and getting it done in a hurry, so some things.
So we could.
Move to table.
Table this into September 2nd.
Correct. And with that being said, we will have to get it in the paper Friday. Is that, what is the deadline day for the American? Because this is the 18th, so in order for it to be in the paper next week, to meet our deadline date for advertisement, we'll have to go in Friday.
And you've got the verbiage. The verbiage is right there that you need.
Yeah, we've done the verbiage.
Got the verbiage, we can do the Bangor Daily News once if we need to as well. We'll, we'll work offline as staff and figure it out.
Okay.
But likely.
I move to table.
Is that again?
All those in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, let's see, where am I now? Because we do have to hold another, Council Order Number 082505, Public Hearing in Action to Place Amendments to the Ellsworth City Charter on the November 4th, 2025 ballot.
Move to table.
Second. Do I have to do the public hearing now? I have to do so.
No, no, we'll do it then.
Okay, okay. We have a move to table in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Bye, guys, thanks.
All right. Council Order Number 082506, Discussion and Potential Action on Rules Change to the City Council Regarding Moving the Standing Timeframe for the Weekly Finance Committee Meetings from 8:00 a.m. on Fridays to 8:00 a.m. on Thursdays.
Yep, this is pretty straightforward. I told Nate I could take this one today. You know, this is upon change of City Hall operating hours from 42 hours a week on three different time schedules, Monday through Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, to a standard 44 hours a week of open operating times, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So aligning this meeting with those operating hours requires a bit of a change just to what you guys decided last November, I want to say, to holding it on Friday. So we held Finance Committee meeting last, last week while City Hall was closed, but this is a recommendation that we move this to Thursday at 8:00 a.m. going forward.
We have motion, discussion?
I move to change the legger in the meeting schedule of the City of Ellsworth Finance Committee from Fridays to Thursday mornings at 8:00 a.m. effective August 21st, 2025, in alignment with the new City Hall operating hours.
Second.
All those in favor? Council Order Number 082507, Ratification of the Appointment of Roddy Erlinbach as the Incoming Parks and Recreation Director.
Yeah, finally, glad to be here.
Congratulations, yeah.
Sunset to Ellsworth High School's own Roddy Erlinbach. I've been joking, keep trying to introduce him, you should meet this person. Yes, he's gone to, you know, second grade with them. I feel like Roddy needs to give me his contact list for the people that I haven't met. He pretty much knows everybody, but it's not just that he loves Ellsworth that we brought him in the role. He has incredible expertise, a degree in recreation, you know, a ton of expertise in a, in a very excellent career up in Sugarloaf, managed trail operations, safety, grants, like all the things that we want to kind of invest in here. And there's sort of a, a last piece to me, too, and it was a very difficult decision, probably one of our biggest applicant pool ever. And Sarah and I had a kind of a, a personal discussion with Roddy afterwards, and he just kind of spoke from the heart about, you know, all the rec op, opportunities that have changed his life at Sugarloaf and growing up here, and that he just really wants to provide those for the kids and the people of this area. Like, it's all right here, and not everybody has access or can afford to go to Sugarloaf or fight the traffic into Acadia with all those folks. And it's just, if we just had better access here, and he talked, he'd talked about just some of the wanderings he'd been making around Branch Lake Forest and how that's not doing so well in some of our other assets, and how he had just these big ideas to really allow kids and others to access this area more. And he talked about recreational theory in ways that it wasn't quite understanding, but recen, reconomics, which he may have coined a term on, and just how that can really help with the economic profile of the city. He's, you know, in seven days in the job, or actually, maybe, maybe 10 days in the job now, has been an enormous help on a variety of fronts, and just so looking forward to his vision and foundation building and partnering with him moving forward. I think, I also got kind of like good city manager vibes about Roddy, too. He's running the Trenton, or the, sorry, the Cara Basset Select Board and their Planning Board, and just like, me too, him and Sarah and other folks, just are creating a great team here that is just trying to collaborate on a bunch of different projects and get them over the line. So I'm really glad to have him on board. And this was also pre-funded through the FY '25 budget process. You know, in FY '25, we didn't, weren't quite there as an organization to bring on a Parks and Rec Director, but so that we pre-funded it to about half of his salary in the previous year, which will encumber over to minimize the impact on this year a little bit, too. So that was my last piece.
Any questions for the manager or for Roddy?
What's the salary?
It's 80,000, Roddy? 80,000.
Roddy, you want to say anything?
Uh.
You don't have to.
Um, yeah, well, thank you all for hiring me, I guess. I guess it still hinges on what you guys decide here in a minute, but it's been kind of a humbling opportunity to return home. I spoke to Charlie and Sarah in that last call about the circumstances in which I'm returning, and it's very much kind of a universe unfolding as it needs to or as it should. My wife and I, my wife also graduated from Ellsworth, and we're kind of, you know, folks my age are realizing their parents are not immortal. So returning home to kind of reconnect with our parents and other extended family members and be here to support, some multi-generational living is going to be happening, which is exciting, but also coming home and just looking at the city under a different lens. I've been fortunate that I inherited my great-grandfather's cottage down in Trenton. My wife and children have been living there in the summers for the past 12 years. So I've been returning in the summer season when there's no skiing available, because I can afford to get away from Sugarloaf as long as I can't ski. So, yeah, so just kind of seeing the evolution of not just Ellsworth, but the greater area, and really trying to wrap my head around how much different it is now compared to when I was a kid. We did the big tour on Thursday and with the Thriving Communities Program and trying to reimagining how people navigate the city. And I actually had an opportunity to talk with some staffers from Susan Collins and Senator King's and Senator Golden's staffs. And I said, you know, when I was a kid, I'd get on my bike and I'd ride seven miles from Trenton up to Laverdiers to the arcade with five of my friends, and we never even batted an eye at it. And I, I have an 11-year-old daughter that I would not allow to ride her bike on the Bayside Road today, just because of the traffic. And I was fortunate, I grew up on the water. I had access to the ocean every single day of my life. There are kids now whose parents don't own property. They own an apartment in workforce housing, or an apartment in low-cost housing, or a senior home. And where do you go swimming if you don't own land in Ellsworth? And we have one beach at the public water supply. So that's really what I'm seeing, what my, my motivation is here and my passion, is seeing how much the recreational opportunities and access to those opportunities have changed in the 35 or 40 years that I've been around, experiencing those to where we are now. And I think it's hugely important, when you live in an area that people are traveling from all over the world to come to to recreate, that you have access to those same opportunities in your backyard. Last, last story. We were out on the water the year of COVID in my 22-foot powerboat, and David Geffen, the record guy, was at the end of Union River Bay in a multi-hundreds of millions of dollars yacht that was taller than my house. And my daughter asked me, how much do you think that boat cost? And I said, I can't even wager a guess, $500 million. And she said, how sad for that man that he had to pay that much money to come to where we live.
Wow.
And I think that is kind of the perception that every kid in Ellsworth should be having. People are spending that much money to come to where I live so I can do what I do every day. So, there it is.
Thank you very much.
Well, I move to ratify the appointment of Roddy Erlinbach as Parks and Recreation Director as an administrative employee reporting to the city manager and deputy city manager in accordance with the city charter and applicable personnel policies effective immediately.
Second. Discussion?
I just, thank you, Roddy. I know some people might think of your position as fluff, government fluff, but I think of it in a much different way. I think of it as similar to you, as an investment in our families, in our young people, and the health of our community. I'm really excited for you to start to tap into the huge amount of volunteers that we have here in Ellsworth to get a lot of these projects done. And I think that Ellsworth did the right thing by putting this out and hiring Parks and Rec Director, and specifically you. So, thank you.
All those in favor? Motion passes, congratulations. So happy to have you.
Ready, will you be able to come to tomorrow morning's Recreation Commission meeting? I'm sure the commission would love to chat with you.
Yeah, it, it is on my, my calendar, yes.
Excellent. Looking forward to seeing you.
Yep.
Okay, Council Order Number 082508, Discussion and Possible Action on Extending the Deadline for Charging Interest on Tax Bills to October 9th, 2025.
So ultimately, what we're looking to do is not just change the interest date, but to move the due date altogether. It's still, we don't have the commitment yet. We're hoping by the end of this week, but that still isn't going to give people 30 days to get the payment in. And we haven't printed anything yet, so we could print the new due date if it's agreed that we could change it. But because you voted on it in June, we need to have another vote to change the date. And what we're looking at doing is changing just the first installment and changing the due date to October 9th, and the interest date, that it would start to accrue interest on the 10th. And the March date would remain the same. That, that wouldn't change. It'd be just the first installment. And then having it printed on the bill, we don't have to put in any kind of insert or anything explaining the difference in the interest date. So, that's what I'm asking for.
I was just going to ask if we're looking to, do we, do we think that this might be a yearly issue, or no, just this year? I'm looking to rectify or to fix.
I said this last year. And we are getting it out earlier than last year. It would be, you know, I don't think, we accounted for the, I know we discussed it at the Finance Committee meeting, and Steve had some excellent points on like the 30-day piece, and that's what I got in casting, you know, more, 45 days or whatnot. And while we would at least get the bills out this year before tax started accruing, which last year was not the case, that you really need to provide that 30 days. And, you know, what we've gone through, you know, not quite as intense as last year's war room to redesign the budget from the ground up, but Sarah, myself, we've added an additional consultant who does assessing services, the Code Enforcement Office really picked up the pace on doing a lot of measurements on new permits and constructions. We're going to start doing a monthly tracking process as new permits come in to make sure that anything that's closed out with the code office, and they do a certificate of occupancy that the assessment's done immediately per month. We're going to reconcile those accounts on permits monthly moving forward. So, yeah, I think this time around, you can definitely fire me if it doesn't come out with 30 days notice to the next time. I feel like I have a much, I do apologize, it's, well, it is a little earlier this time around, and I think this, from a cash flow perspective, this won't really be a change because we're going to be getting the bills out earlier. And once those go online, most of everybody's mortgage companies will probably pay both installments as soon as they get it, so it's not really going to affect our cash position. But in the future, you know, I, we did some other math, now that we have a new process, there really isn't a reason we shouldn't have this done by June 1st, you know, in terms of all the data in the system. April 1st, 2025 of this year is when no new permits would even be considered, so that backlog, I have a much better understanding of how that backlog is processed, and I have some mechanisms to make sure that it'll never happen again, and not just next year, but they're out. The finance, I'm sorry, the tax collector and the, our, our IT person also put together a good memo on just like the process, but a week and a half's work of work on how it gets printed and put into the system, and from vision to the kind of printing software, so I'm really good on that. And then we'll have a, a new kind of operations manual for how this moves forward. So I apologize, this one's on me. I should have had it not just before the deadline came out, but a full 30 days before, so we'll make sure that doesn't happen again.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Move to amend the previously adopted resolution from the regular June 2025 council meeting, setting the 2026 Ellsworth tax due dates by changing the first installment due date from September 11th, 2025 to October 9th, 2025, with interest to begin on October 10th, 2025. The second installment shall remain due on March 12th, 2026, with interest beginning March 13th, 2026.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Makes my life a whole lot easier.
It does. Okay, Council Order Number 082509, Acceptance of the Resignation of Michelle Beal as Council Chair. I, I have asked to discuss with the city manager, I think that what's coming up with discussion over the next few months, before and after the election, I think we're at a point in the city now that we're going to have some really great discussions, and I think in long-term, and I personally feel that it should be led by someone that is going to continue after the election. As you know, I'm not running this, for a second term.
Boo.
And I think it's, and I think it's very important that someone step into my place to continue working with the city manager and staff and the council continuously on the, what I really believe are great plans for the future of the city. I'm very excited about watching what happens, and I'm, I'm really sad to do this. I know it's kind of unprecedented to, to do this, but I think the city's been through quite a bit in the last few years and a lot of change, and it's now time to settle for a long-term decision-making. Do we have a motion? Please.
I'll make a motion. I'll move to accept the resignation of Michelle Beal as chairperson, but to remain a council member until the end of her term, effective immediately, and that Councilman, Member Tammy Moat be appointed to serve as Chair pro temp until a new chair is elected.
And I did forget to add that piece. So, once I resign, I can't lead you, and we need to, the next thing we need to do is vote on the chair, a new chair. So that's why I've asked Tammy to, to lead that vote for us.
I'll second.
And discussion? All those in favor?
Before we vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank you for being the chair and serving the City of Ellsworth as well as you have, both as an employee for many years and then on the council. And you've done a lot of good for our community, and a lot of people appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. I, I can't say that being on the council has been an honor. And, and not, you know, it's been very different sitting at the table on this end of the table than it is on that end of the table, but it has been, it's been great, and it really, and really and truly has been an honor to, to serve as your chairperson for the last two years. It really is.
I agree with Patrick, and it's, you've been a really great leader and role model, and especially as a new council member. So, thank you.
All those in favor? Again, opposed? Okay, Tammy, you're up. Do you want to sit over here?
Do I need to?
You can do whatever you want. You're chair pro temp.
You're chair. You can sit wherever you want.
Council order number 082510, acceptance of nominations and election of a new council chair to serve to the November 2025 organizational meeting. So we're just, accept some nominees.
I nominate Patrick Lyons. Oh, I'll second that, yeah. Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? Sorry. Okay. All those in favor to nominate Patrick Lyons as the new council chair?
Unanimous.
Excellent. So now you just do the last one.
Now you get to do the last one. I hope you're better with that than I am.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
All those in.